Call the meeting to order, welcome you to the April sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four meeting of the zoning board of Canada. We'll begin our meeting with the pledge leaders of flag and then I'd go by me in a moment of silence afterwards.
Why do we just supply United States America into the Republic of Louisiana, one nation, other indivisible, liberty and justice for all?
Great. We'll zoom procedure, we'll just review quickly and then our meeting procedures. We have new public hearings only tonight and when we open the public hearing, have the applicant come up and present their cases or where they're requesting a variance. They will present information to us, we can ask questions of the applicant after they're finished with that. We can ask for any input from not a lot of crowd tonight, but from anyone at home as well. People at home, if they wish to say something, you can indicate that to Mike. And then after we've heard from any published comments, the applicant can, we have asked the applicant if they want to close the public hearing. If so, I will close the public hearing and then we generally have thirty. Sixty-two days to make a decision, we generally make the decision later the presentation, so. And if anybody wants to stay around while we debate our debate the decision, I welcome to do that. Okay, first one is Adam Heller, four oh five six County Road sixteen, Canada, New York, respect discussing area variance of seven feet. Per side setback of one foot when eight feet is required in order to install a twenty-four thousand watt generator, one hour generator, one foot from the property. Mr. Heller here?
Scott, I'm the guy installed.
Okay.
All right, guys, Scott Forte, Scott Forte with Upstate. So we're looking at putting in a Generac twenty-four K W generator at forty fifty-six. Westlake Road or County Road sixteen, wherever you guys go by, sixteen, County Road sixteen. And on the side of the house where we are planning on putting it next to the deck, we can get it eighteen inches from the deck that would get it about one foot from the property line generator. And I was able to have the neighbor sent an email in that they were totally fine with us putting a generator in that location. And there's already an air conditioner in that spot, so it it would look like it goes right there. And then there's trees, there's some new shrubs they just put in that disguises it from the road. And yeah, so nothing too crazy.
Does it extend out further than the air conditioner?
Oh, let's take a look. No, no, there would be, that AC is probably about eighteen inches as well. The duck goes in a few inches from the house, so if anything, it might be in a few inches from the air conditioner and it'll be in that flower bed. Which, to be honest, that flower bed almost looks like it's on the neighbor's property.
And you haven't heard from any of the other neighbors or anything? What about noise? Obviously, that's.
Um, noise, they come on once a week, they run for five minutes, their weekly test cycle. The neighbor actually does have a generator as well, the one who's okay with that. And as far as decibels, I believe they're about sixty-seven decibels. And the the drawing here looks a little different than yours, it should, the one that you guys are showing kind of shows the house like right on the property line where there actually is some space there.
And said how far it has to be from the structures?
It's gotta be five foot from windows, doors and vents, and if you don't have windows, doors and vents such as a deck, eighteen inches. And it'd be set on a concrete pad. Right within that garden.
Would have any questions?
Yes, when I was, I went out for the visit and I, you go up behind the house to turn around, there's another. House or something there, what is that?
It's, it was gonna be a purpose, I think, they just put that in last year. I don't know the purpose of it, to be honest.
Because I didn't bring my specs with me, I didn't know if I was looking at that building for the, for, or, or this one, but it was.
Yeah, if you look in the back, you can, I think you can barely see it right there.
Is that listed as something, Mike, that other dwelling?
Can you circle the house we're talking about, the location, it just. How did it get to be an eight, what, such a small size up there?
These yellow lines from Encore are always headed north, so they're always close to me up here.
Yeah, I would say this.
This is actually further away than it should be.
But it's still pretty close, relatively. Right, it's the various.
Was there any information as to why?
That's an Analinda area there, so it's kind of a cluster.
One, I don't think is the, is an Analinda house?
No, but it's in that general area.
It was not a Linda house, I wouldn't even ask the question. Thirty foot in between the houses. There's how much? There's probably at least thirty foot in between the houses. Mike, can you measure that so we could put that in there minutes? Ish? Might even be more.
There's no other place you could put it, it's right next to the gas main, the electric box is just on the inside right there.
It's really weird, the way the house is constructed, there's this walk around all the way around the house and it's some concrete walkway. With a barrier wall and I would have to do trenching on the neighbor's property to go put it some random place in the backyard. So the gas meters rate, gas and electric are all right there. And I can't go above the air conditioner because there's those vents there, it'll push me out five foot, you know, well under the neighbor's property.
So it sits a little bit in front of them? In front of the house then?
Yes, yep, it would be layered up right alongside the deck.
Now, the other side of the house is is tight because of the driveway and whatever, I, if we wanted to look at, did they have options?
There's no basement on that side of the house to get there.
Oh, okay.
And it slopes out a little bit too.
Oh, yeah, a lot?
Yeah.
It's just sort of how, interesting how that lot line was ever established.
Yeah.
Or they might have built that house where it is without variance.
And I'm still, I still don't know what the the mystery building is behind, it's, it wasn't occupied, but you know, behind the.
The one on the left there?
Yeah.
I thought that was separate, wasn't that separate? Yeah, that's, that's a, I thought that was just recently for sale too, wasn't it?
Yep.
Okay, so and that's not, is that, that's not part of?
I wasn't sure because the, that's, that has a different address than the, the little thing, or?
I don't think so.
I thought it was separate just because they sold it, but I don't know.
I mean, it doesn't show a different property.
And I, you, you wouldn't be the one to answer that question though.
So the, the engineer drawing that I have here shows that little structure there. Shows a deck, I don't know if there's a deck anymore.
Yeah, because that was all redone.
Yes, there is.
Looks like the same parcel.
I think the sale sign that had been down.
Yeah, remember when we?
Yeah, I think that was.
Those last year, maybe.
It's just been bought, correct?
Yeah, it's, they haven't changed possession yet, but it's in the process.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I've been doing, you know, going through this for, you know, six months or something, and since then, he's like, well, I want to sell it now. All right. It's just been dragging on.
Yeah, walking by that, I had interpreted that little house that was sold.
Yeah, I thought it was separate.
So technically, that's considered, that's what they're, you're classifying as the third, the third structure, or what is it? Oh, no, we're just going by the setback, is it just the one, sorry, wrong one.
Any other questions? You have any additional information?
Um, I think I've submitted it all, I went and put the sign in the yard last week. Visible from the road, next to the sale sign.
Is there anyone in the audience who has any questions about us?
Sorry, so anything else, just?
That other part, that thing in the back is confusing, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about why this house is ten feet off the property line? No, it's not even that. It's not a problem, I just. Oh, yeah, yeah. It's not your fault, it's just.
Or we can, we can take a look into that, Mike.
It must be a pre-existing.
Are they old houses?
It's an old house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they are old houses.
Okay.
Probably say it's a nineteen sixties house.
I have a, I have a friend that lives up there and I know some of the troubles over the years that.
Looking at the overhead, I felt like it was like a nineteen eighty's house, but it must just.
Yeah, the road, ask him about the road, that's even better.
No, no, I don't want to talk about.
No, the one that's not, the other side, that's not.
Okay. Age solves my problems.
So I have a comment?
Chris.
Yeah, Chris Jensen, owner of property of fifty-one eighty, County Route sixteen, my only comment is that it's a two-point-six acre parcel and out of that entire parcel. It, it needs to go right there with a one-foot setback.
Yeah, so as far as we're, the setup of the house and the layout around the house, there's no way to get a gas and an electric line from the service. To a different generator location without having to trench on the neighbor's property. So there's, there is one possible spot way out in the middle of the backyard, but we can't get there without going through the neighbor's property underground.
Thanks.
You'd have to see it to understand it, there's this. Thing around the house, it's like a bunker.
What is it?
It's like a sidewalk that's got a big huge retaining wall and it goes all the way around the house. You'd have to go like block the sidewalk and through a retaining wall. Yeah, it's right about where that shadow is, it goes all the way around the back of the house.
Comfortable and closing in the public hearing?
Sure.
You have about sixty-two days to make a decision, but.
Okay.
Pretty sure we'll go tonight.
Sounds good.
Welcome to stay around.
Would I need to resubmit the permit? I already submitted the original permit. Since I already did that to start all this.
Those permits in there?
I did that, the first thing I did.
If everything goes through tonight, we'll just be the CEO, the CEO.
Okay, all right, thank you, guys.
Okay, next one, well, I want to jump down to, to German since. Look like anybody for the other ones here, right? All right, let's jump down then, Peter German, fifty-one thirty-one.
Is on Zoom.
And requesting construction of a two-story thirteen hundred and forty-five foot square, square foot detached private garage. An area variance of four hundred and forty-five square feet is required, where nine hundred square feet is the maximum. And thirteen forty-five is proposed. Variance for habitable space in a detached private garage is required. And a twenty-five foot front setbacks is needed where thirty-five is proposed and sixty is the minimum.
Okay, so the main purpose of this is obviously to get some garage space, but I'm gonna heat it in the air condition, I have a son that's. Pretty severely handicapped, he's very smart, but he's got a body that doesn't work, so he's out of ventilator, heating pump. He needs twenty-four hours of care and so I have a lot of medical supplies, he's at our team presently, but he's gonna be moving home shortly. And I, two or three of the rooms in our house are full of suction catheters and equipment and stuff that. Requires that, so my idea was to climate control the garage and I'd have storage for that. And the other thing is there's rumors that we might be considering having like in-law apartments or something, working on changing the zoning. So I wanted to have it large enough if you did change the zoning. And that way he can, if he's twenty-four years old, he'd prefer not to be living with his dad. Yeah, he wants to live independently as much as he can, so. Again, purposes to have a garage for like vehicles and storage for his equipment, so. I'm not a parcel that's fifty-five acres roughly, so I don't think a density problem, they're gonna take down the two-car garage that's attached to the old barn. And then there's a building on Boy Road that. So that's how thirteen hundred, I think it's thirteen hundred ninety square feet came off, you know, on far as cheap trading space, I know. They were all pre-existing, so I know there's a square footage total of what, three thousand square feet for our buildings? So that's where it was coming up with the thing, you know, I really didn't want to get involved some dividing the property to. Build something different to come up with it.
So the agricultural building's down here.
You can see the one in the middle, it's the one that's gonna be removed.
We, first we reviewed this, my first we reviewed this, we thought that this had to be part of the square footage allowed on the land. But they're agricultural buildings, so that variance has been removed, so it's just the two variances. So we don't have to worry about that, the only thing is same issue we had the last time with the detached private garage, the turret. The definition is nine hundred square feet and they're asking for bigger, that's variance and, and the distance to the road.
What distinguishes a garage from a barn, you know?
Super good question.
You know, so I'm just wondering, I, you know, if I called it a barn with that supplies, you know? I just don't know what the difference is, I don't know if it's a construction.
We get into this.
If it's gonna store a vehicle.
Right, depends on living.
You know, but barns you store tractors and cars and everything else, boats.
There's a name that goes with primary use.
Do you have a floor plan in here? Layout, the dimensions, let's see. What do you, what do you, I guess describe the structure as best you can, you don't have to be a perfect.
So there's a three-car garage, it's a deep garage. And then on the road side, the closest to the road, there'll be stairs that will lead into the, you know. And then there's also storage.
Could you move the microphone a little bit? I can't, I can't hear.
So again, so we got three-car garage.
Okay. I could hear you better now, as we were by that side.
So three-car garage on the side that's closest to the road is gonna have a staircase going up to the attic. And underneath the stairs and would be about the size of one garage, if it was a four-car garage, would be storage on the first floor. So the, just the first floor is gonna be heated in the air condition.
So is this really, I mean, that's the size of a six-car garage?
Well, I think they drew some small cars in there, but.
Okay, so it's really, it's a three and a, it's a three plus car, three, three plus, plus, plus.
Yeah, I thought if they had to, if you were gonna store a extra car, you'd probably have to do it sideways, you know, in front of the garage.
With an entry, stairs, storage and first floor bare. Little porch, little covered porch?
A little covered porch. And then, you know, again, just in case, you know, the zoning changes, you know, we've kind of sectioned out a spot that I could put an elevator. Go up to the second floor.
And upstairs is?
Just storage.
It's a big empty room.
Big empty room.
With eaves, it looks like. So out of how much total square feet?
Uh, it's roughly fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred square feet. And. So ten by twenty by twenty is a two-car garage, so thirty by thirty is a three-car garage? That accurate?
And so that's the area, definitely.
Thirty by thirty. Twenty feet is sh- short for, you know, I have a pickup truck that would be on the shadow of a fifty or twenty.
But it's a fourteen hundred square foot footprint.
Right.
And then. Fourteen hundred upstairs?
What is the, yeah, what's the dimensions of the upstairs?
Same.
My.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
Point is, how much, how much of this is garage?
On the, probably, I would say three quarters of it would be garage on the first floor and one quarter would be storage and staircase and stuff.
It's less than half total, which makes it about.
So where is the store, staircase going to?
It's going to the attic for storage.
Okay.
That would be just whole storage.
So that's not where the bathroom and the temperature is going, that's just going up to?
The bathroom's on the first floor there.
Okay.
Wait, it's not insulated upstairs?
They're gonna insulate, insulate the ceiling of the first floor.
Oh.
So there is a porch?
Well, a walk-in, so just right where, yeah, right where the.
Basically, there's a pan.
Just a pan.
And how are you getting the electrical and plumbing all over there from the house?
Well, I just had a new septic system put in last year, a one-ish, but. And at the time, I wasn't thinking about the garage, but it was oversized in case at some point I ever put an addition on the house, which I doubt that I do. I thought I might as well go a little bigger than what's necessary, it's like an engineering drawings and stuff, the town has like that, so. So there's a wells behind, it's a full barn. That's probably a hundred feet from the house and I had been there for water. Bring sewer lateral over to the existing septic system.
So there's something coming down which will take away current space?
Two-car garage, it's attached to the existing barn, so right there, it's roughly, yeah, so just to the. Right there, and that's roughly twenty by twenty. And then there's another building that would be removed, which I guess we don't have to worry about. That's getting removed at this.
So. It's habitable space just as a result of the bathroom?
That's how we were defining it, but. Chris Jensen brought up in the letter he sent, some of the, I mean, that's how we defined it for.
Yeah.
A case we did recently, the lady has an office in the garage and it's put in the bathroom. So definitely going. New York State Code apparently says other things, Chris is online to wanna.
I've got his letter up here.
Yeah, I didn't know if I could chime in or anything like that.
Go ahead, Chris.
First, I want to say I'm the neighbor adjacent property owner and I'm a hundred percent in support of everything that's going on here. Just, just to put that on record, but I think the town Canada code is kind of being misinterpreted. And so if you look at the AR one zoning district, which meets the requirements of the RR three, it says. Detached accessory buildings and accessory structures serving residential as specified in code two twenty-nine. And if you go to two twenty-nine, this lot is greater than twenty thousand square feet, it doesn't say anything about detached private garages. It says the combined footprint for all detached accessory structures, three thousand square feet for a property of this size. So I don't think an area variance is required, I don't think a variance for habitable space required, because you can heat and cool a garage or a storage building. Or an accessory structure without making it habitable, and a bathroom isn't considered habitable space under building code, I know it's confusing. The town code with building code, but I don't believe habitable space, this is habitable space until it converts it into a dwelling or a sleeping unit or a living space.
I mean, it's insulated, insulated and conditioned, the upstairs with base, and put a kitchen in, then it would be habitable space, right?
Then it would be a dwelling. So right now, it's not habitable spaces drawn, it's got a bathroom which isn't considered habitable space and it's heated and cooled, which. If he wants to keep his stuff in a climate-conditioned place, even if he had a million-dollar car that he wanted to stay in a conditioned space, which a lot of people do. It's not habitable space, it's a garage still or a detached accessory structure, and the whole nine hundred square feet garage thing is pretty much for a vacant lot. It, it was written so that any lot over twenty thousand square feet and this size could have three thousand square feet of accessory structures. And if you read under that, accessory structures are considered, uh, let's see, under. Let's see, permitted accessory buildings, detached accessory buildings, accessory structures serving residential uses, including private garages, swimming pools, hot tubs, storage buildings, the greenhouse. So this is an accessory structure, the total of accessory structures in the lot is under three thousand square feet and it doesn't contain habitable space. I mean, I could comment on energy code and everything like that as far as he should probably insulate, the, the thermal envelopes in the ceiling. The whole space is considered part of the residential slash conditioned space, but that's a whole nother topic, but, uh. Yeah, it, I don't consider it a habitable space or needing requirement for a variance, because he could just call it an accessory structure and call it a day.
Traditionally, far more than fifty percent of this structure is not in garage.
It's storage, accessory structures can be storage, it can be garage, it can be anything you want.
Chris, could you comment on the difference between this accessory structure and the garage?
No, they're the same, they're the same thing. A garage is an accessory structure, just like a swimming pool is an accessory structure. Just like the generator you just looked at, because the side setback is an accessory structure.
We did run into this.
This is the same conversation we had last month and we discussed.
For back to last month and.
Yeah.
Well, unclarity of.
Lots of New York State.
I think I'll propose a, a suggested revision to the ordinance committee. Here to clear this up.
Or just put this, put a definition of a habitable structure or habitable space and match that of the uni- the uniform building code.
Well, the problem is more, we categorize and classify garages. As a subcategory of accessory structure with specific limitations that. Don't necessarily fit. The structures, you're, if you draw a line, what's the garage and what's not based on that picture alone?
But the, the structure itself seems like it's a, a storage structure, he's storing cars. And he's storing the equipment, and it's a conditioned space, so the stuff he's storing is not destroyed.
Fortunately, it didn't come to this last month when I was unfortunately absent. Um, and I think you guys made the right decision to grant variance in that situation. Since you had already granted variances for that project anyway, and. Variances you granted, I believe, were based on a zoning law determination, uh, that Chris Jensen actually had prepared. Um, and then your, your staff turns over and there's different understandings of the law, and that's to be expected, it makes sense. Uh, but my, I, I concur that uh, the limitation on a garage does not. Necessarily make something you store vehicles in. And only be nine hundred square feet, you can, you can store an accessory structure. Can store things, they can be cars, they can be tractors.
Because a lot of size first, because.
Yeah, um, you know, I would. Uh, I think the.
May I?
If you were to grant, hang on just a sec, Chris, if you were to grant variance, one of the conditions I would suggest is that you. The, the plans have to be revised to cross outdoor garage and put like storage, but beyond that, I think.
Well, this is, this is conformed to the same thing we were last month. This is an interpretation, in, in essence. I mean, if, if we were to interpret this the way Chris Jensen has described it. Uh, this, this wouldn't be, we wouldn't even be talking about a variance.
So fortunately, yes, I agree with that statement. Um, New York State Town Law Article sixteen. Defines a zoning board's authority. It's in the reason we have zoning law determination, because you can grant an area variance or use variance for an appeal. Um, all three of them allow you to do what ought to have been done in your opinion. So you can grant a variance that says, he's allowed to build this. We're not gonna read the shall be be granted an area variance to do the following. You have quasi judicial authority to. Do what ought to have been done in your opinion in the zoning law determination, so essentially. You grant his application to allow for the construction proposed.
Not as a variance.
Yeah, we wouldn't say shall he be granted a variance to build a thirteen hundred square foot garage. But it seems to me that none of you think he's building a thirteen hundred square feet foot garage.
I, I'm um, going around in circles with uh, terms and their meaning. We started out by talking about the primary use for whatever, and it appears to me it's multi. It isn't, there isn't, I can't find a primary, I mean, we're talking about storage of cars, but also storage of other things. And uh, the, uh, the place for habitation, uh, whatever that terminology is. So I'm getting myself a little uh, lost in the weeds here.
Yep.
Um. And, and I hope you can understand wh- what we're dealing with, with the town, because this is a hot rental area. And no matter what your uh, reasons, and they're good, for doing what you wanna do. When you pass on, then, then we have, we, we still have this uh, variance in place, and we all have to live with it, so.
I think in, at the present time, there's no a- asking for habitation in the building. You know, I'm just hoping that the zoning law changes that, you know, that I've told that by a couple of town officials. That that was in the process, and if it gets changed, I'll come back in. See if we can remodel the upstairs and finish it.
Well, this is a different case too, right?
Well, and I think I'm hearing the opinion that. Um, this is not creating a habitable space if we follow plan.
Right.
Um, so if that's the case, does that variance even need to be come, come here?
And that's what Chris was kind of saying.
No, so, but.
But, and, but I'm looking at Mike because this is your determination.
Well, that is the, that is what we've been doing in the development office, that's the idea we've been going.
Okay.
Chris brought up a great point, we've all discussed it today. If it's only the toilet in there, the bathroom in there, it's not habitable space.
Right.
And we weren't even taking into consideration the heating and cooling, just that.
Yep.
So, but, so what you've got right now is a zoning law determination. It's not, I don't, I don't necessarily agree. In the face of this argument, I mean, when presented with this argument, I disagree with the zoning law determination, but it's not a. It's not out there, it, it makes sense, the code says nine hundred square feet for a garage, the code.
Well, I'm talking about the second one, the, the habitable part.
Yeah, so, um. I don't think you need a variance there either, um, for the reasons Chris Jensen said, but.
I also think we say, we don't, I also think we don't ever say habitable, you know, I think we.
It's not, it's not defined in our code, but you've got a zoning law determination. Uh, that, you know, if Mike wants to change it, he can, but it, but. You've got an applicant requesting an order, and it seems like a more efficient way to, that you.
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm asking, is I'm trying to figure out.
Oh, yeah, I think you, the first two, you issue an order, and I think there's a third one, right? Twenty five foot in front second.
The third one, we, I'm.
That one's.
That's a different question.
Yeah, that one.
May, may I add a comment?
Mm-hmm. Sure thing.
So, so the intent of the nine hundred square foot was originally when it was adopted. The, a lot under twenty thousand square feet was defined as having allowable a one detached private garage. And one additional detached accessory structure not exceeding two hundred square feet. And that's why they defined a private garage as the nine hundred square feet. Then it goes on to saying anything over twenty thousand square feet could have a total combined footprint of all detached accessory buildings. So a detached garage is an accessory building, but the reason they put detached private garage was for lots of twenty thousand square feet to allow them to have a detached garage. And a shed in their property. I think it was kind of just written incorrectly and, and interpreted a little differently.
So our options here, I guess, are to. Well, number one, we'll work on the variance of the thirty five feet, but, um. Can we? Vote to. Or order to go over, override the uh, interpretation?
Mike, can you just Google New York State Town Law two six seven dash B? And it says the Board of Appeals has permitted actions by the zoning board of. Board of Appeals may reverse or overturn wholly or partly. Or may modify the order requirement, decision, interpretation, or determination. Appealed from and shall make such order requirement, decision, interpretation. Or determination as in its opinion ought to have been made in the matter by the administrative official, Mike. Charged with the enforcement of such ordinance, and shall have all the powers of the administrat- administrative official. From whose order the appeal is taken. So essentially, I think what you're gonna do. Is grant an order. That this is not a garage, that this is not a habitable space, therefore variances aren't needed.
Well, do you feel vindicated, Bob? I do. It was exactly what we did last month, yeah, and here's my question.
You couldn't have done that. How would you have known this? How would you have figured that out?
Well, we couldn't, obviously. Bob and I were left to hang, anyway, we got over it.
It sounds like, it sounds like.
Glad you came back.
I mean, we have done garage accessory structure one after another. Where we, we go back and, and codify the, the fact that we're unable to put a bathroom in or anything under those. I don't see anything, why can't, if, if I'm gonna look at this case from this point on, I'm gonna put a garage in, I'm gonna damn well put a bathroom in. And I don't see that there's any reason that I haven't, what's to stop me?
What is the definition of habitable space? Do we have that in our?
There's.
Our code? No, but so I think. Hey, Chris, could you weigh in on this? I think those might be in the RLD, that says you can't have a bathroom in a garage, but no.
Yeah, maybe, might be.
I, I don't think it's there either. I can give you the definition of habitable space per the residential code, but again, like you're talking zoning and planning and stuff like that. But a habitable space is a space in a building for living, sleeping, eating, or cooking. Bathrooms, toilet rooms, closets, halls, storage, or utility spaces and similar areas are not considered habitable space.
We were, we used to be against putting plumbing in.
Yeah.
And I remember that just like it was yesterday, and I'm just wondering.
Why can't you have a sink in your ba- your garage to clean your hands before you?
I don't know, the, I, I, you know, I'm just saying, what are, what we've done in the papers.
I'm recollecting, you weren't granting variances. For plumbing or a bathroom in the garage, or granting variances for people finishing off the second floor of their. Uh, garage, you were, you were checking to make sure people weren't turning these into guest houses.
And we did actually grant some.
That's why you always.
Right.
We were conditioning.
And we did grant some too, so, as long as they were appearing.
Plumbing in there, and have this, oh, well, I have to have plumbing, that's, I worked on this kind of, you need to rinse the parts. People gave those explanations.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, I think you were asking, because so many people had. Flipped these and turned them into guest houses, which in an order that you guys. Uh, issued tonight, you might wanna say also, whatever you do. You can't, this order doesn't allow you to turn that second floor into an apartment for your son unless you come back and get. Uh, a variance or habitable space in an accessory structure.
Right.
But as a recommendation to the applicant, though, if they are going to, in the future, maybe go that route. I would recommend they build the structure and shell and insulation and the thermal envelope and everything. To meet code, so they don't have to tear anything apart when they go to make this a habitable space.
Yeah, I, again, I don't, at the present time, I'm not following, but I assume that you're talking about insulating the. See, I don't wanna heat the upstairs, you know, at this time, you know, obviously.
You could insulate it though, and.
Yeah.
Then not have to.
That's just, yeah, general advice.
Yeah, no, yeah, that's, that's the thing, though, if you, it depends on where the thermal envelope is, where the insulation is. So if he had to, if he put the insulation on the floor between the garage and the attic. Or the storage space, the storage space isn't inside the thermal envelope, and then he'd have to tear out the ceiling in the storage space. I'm just saying, if he does it right now and insulates the ceiling, the thermal envelope is the entire structure, but again, that's insulation. Uh, stuff like that around the slab, around the footers and stuff, but that's something between him and his engineer. I just wanted to bring it up, so he doesn't have to do stuff twice.
Now, let me ask another question then. If, I'm not aware of what the town behind the, you know, scenes. But if, if there is a possibility that we're right on the verge of. Uh, a new uh, town board meeting, whatever, would it, uh, would you? Uh, be able to postpone for another month or whatever it would take, and I'm just asking.
And again, I, you know, part of it, I had to talk with my son, you know, he, he preferred, you know, be on his own, so. He possibly, you know, I'm hoping that as I get older, you know, that he would be. Home, you know, or at least across the driveway from.
Okay. Then there's no reason, I mean, that's you have the authority to do this to address situations just like those.
Yeah, do we need a motion?
Yes.
To order that, I guess.
Yes, well, first you should decide if you're going to grant a twenty five foot front setback variance.
Can we, can you pull up the?
Is that closer than the houses? No, it's behind the front of the house.
But since the front of the house is already closer than sixty feet wider.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Ah, okay, so, okay, that makes sense.
Less of a variance if it's part of it, then hopefully.
Yeah. Formality, basically.
Anybody have any questions about the thirty five foot?
I don't give a shit.
What do you about what you mean?
So, yeah, I think you would, somebody could make a motion to do an order to.
Don't make my statement, I don't mind.
Go ahead, I, I haven't figured out yet, so.
Yeah, right.
But I'm hoping you're gonna write up this one.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see an alternative there.
I, I think I'd like to make a motion that we.
Come on, no, no, you gotta.
You can't say.
Come on, confidently, you gotta.
Then I will make a motion that we are going to.
Issue an order.
Issue an order reversing the determination from the. Uh, zoning people, that. Um, this is a storage, an accessory building for storage and is not looking for habitable space. Therefore, neither of those variances are required.
Perfect.
Anybody thinks they might wanna second that?
I'll second it.
Sorry, this is.
No, I get it. Yeah, I understand.
Discussion?
I'll play it back. I'm just kidding.
Oh, yeah.
I do.
You're right.
All right.
All right, I wanna call a question, I guess then.
Okay, um, shall the absentee granted front setback variance in twenty five feet? Shannon Chevy.
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly Lovoie?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes. And then we probably oughta.
We have to vote on that.
For your motion.
Yeah.
So just voting.
So this Chevy is motion be granted.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so, so you asked Bob Hilliard?
We're, we're on the same.
Voting on Shannon's motion.
Would it be more like an I and a?
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly Lovoie?
Yeah.
Chip Saylor.
Yes.
Well done, guys. I think that's the, the right solution there. I think that gives the ordinance committee and both the office staff and me. Uh, kicking the pants that we need to get this addressed, and I like the fact that your zoning officer is going, huh, huh, yes, yes. And brought his brother up on him.
Perfect.
Chris, it's nice to uh, see you, Ish, talk to you.
Yeah, honestly, it's been a real pleasure, and I do a hundred percent support Mr. German and his endeavors and everything, and. Thanks for listening to me and my brother Mike there, uh. Sorry, I. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Chris, thank you, Chris, for your involvement, so.
You're like a whore now that he's not the candidate for the sportsman officer, don't you?
No, he was okay before.
Yes, he was.
See you later.
So we all.
Okay, so we're all set then. Yes.
Okay.
Are you in a massive rush to start construction? When do you need to start construction?
No, when?
Are you starting? Well, the order is in effect today.
Yes, and you have.
No, I'm keying it back.
One year.
But I would like a couple, a day or two.
People, uh.
No, not tomorrow.
Yeah, he's, he's not, they're not ready to start.
Hopefully in the next couple of months.
By the end of the.
Oh, no, yeah.
He just needs a couple days to write it out, figuring out the wording, right?
Yeah.
It is, it is conditioned on it being. One year, you have one year to get the building. And that, and that habitable. And that, and that habitable, turning it into habitable space. Will require an accessory structure. Variants for habitable structure.
And based, based on the information provided. Also, can you make a change?
Yeah, you're all set.
Change the garage there?
Yeah, and it's also conditioned on, uh, you crossing out the word garage.
Yeah.
Don't worry.
Information presented, information presented, and I accept change.
Yeah.
Change garage to accessory building. Alright, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are our reasons on this? We need reasons.
Mess confusion.
You come up with a statement.
I'll, I'll give you some reasons.
Okay.
So gotta wait, uh, twenty-five foot front setback was very rejected.
Yeah, right. And one of the reasons for that is it's still is further.
Behind the house.
Behind the house.
It's already a non-existing.
There's some other things people want to have Chris include in the. I guess the only one we have to have reasons for, really, we have.
Yeah.
I guess we had to, well, we.
But alright, fuck, I'll look at the plans and all.
Except the motion.
Alright.
The, so the board attorney will prepare a.
A statement.
Uh, the, the, the decision sheet. Well, actually, you do a decision sheet if you would, it just says, see.
Secret.
Order and findings prepared by town attorney. That's what we needed to start doing decades ago. Is just do the regular decision sheet that says, see what Nader writes at some point. Okay.
It's a working project, right?
We make another recommendation to the ordinance committee? Okay. Even, uh, to maybe help define habitable space?
I got, I mean, I know.
Okay.
Should we address this generator, so that you can present it?
Right now, right?
Yeah.
Think you've got way we have other.
I can tell you that in Greece.
No, I don't think you should define it.
In Greece, it was another chance.
Yeah. I love the idea of defining. It's state of the art.
Okay.
I'd like to see what Greece.
Okay.
Let's, let's just jump back, uh, to the generators.
Alright, I'm ready. Everybody?
Are people ready to vote on the generator?
Any discussion or?
I don't disagree with Chris Jensen on this one. I, you know, I know, it's, it's a lot easier to put it where it is, but. It's a big lot, there's, there ought to be able to, you know, you're talking about a gas line, you're talking about an electric wire. Not a small electric wire.
Oh, I know, oh, you, when you said that, I thought you were saying something different, when you said your, yeah, I mean, he, I read his notes or whatever.
I know, it's, you know, I'm sure I'll be in the minority on this one, but. Again, I just think that that's awfully close to the neighbor's line, I know it's no closer than the. But I don't, I mean, this generator thing is gonna come up time after time after time, and people are gonna see, you know, a foot off the. The neighbor's line.
Where else would you put it?
I don't know, but I just, again, it's just a generator, it's not a, we're not talking about. It doesn't have to be right next to the main, I'm sure they've got gas inside the house, it's, it, it's not a substantial. Draw, but it's, you know, it's a pretty big electric line that. I know it might have to be. Logistically, it's a lot more easier, it's easier to put it where he wants to put it.
Somebody else dealt the cards, he has to play them, but they're, the, the alternative of putting it deeper in the property. Would probably be more expensive.
I don't know, absolutely.
I wouldn't be able to get it there without going up.
Okay.
But that's, well, I guess.
Can we?
Will the neighbor let you go in their property, I guess is the question.
Well, the, the neighbors said they were okay with it, like where it was.
Different, that's a whole different question.
This is my opinion, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I, and, and I certainly understand you, but I think. I would feel it probably could go where it is, where he's recommending, just.
And there's an air conditioner there.
Lot less disruption there, we then, uh, it's the obvious place to have it.
So, and it's not, I mean, they have an air conditioner there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
I'm not disagreeing with any of that.
No, I know.
I'm just saying to me, I mean, I don't even know why, I think at some point in time, I could put a generator in my garage. And, and no one's gonna, I don't need a variance, I don't need anything for it, I think their ordinance committee is gonna have to address this at some point, because, you know, we've got some. Really bang up laws in New York State coming our way. We're all gonna need a generator, but that's just my opinion again. You're in the right business.
Are we ready to vote?
I am, I'm.
Okay.
Okay, shall the requested variance of seven feet granted? Shannon Chevy?
Yes.
Bob Hilliard?
No.
David Emery?
No.
Kelly Lloyd?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yes.
If that raises the question, I, I can't, I couldn't, I tried during the thing, but I couldn't find it in. Ontario planning board meeting minutes.
Um, I don't think they.
I don't think there was.
No, they, when you looked that up, um, it was exempt.
Sure.
I, I looked it up today, and it said exempted, and I assume that means.
Yeah.
They don't have any state opportunity.
Wait, it's on, it's on, wait, is it? It's in the R L D, right?
Yeah, they've sent us a whole list of, uh.
Yes, it's in the R L D.
Even bothering with anymore.
Don't send it to us?
Yeah.
Oh.
Wow, really?
On, on that one, I know I looked, listed as exempt, yeah. We have one last.
Yeah, we've had a couple, couple.
Okay, reasons. Well, it's, conditions are based on the, uh, plans as presented tonight. Just to be done within one year. Reasons for support?
Mine is completely because it's in line with something else already there, and that's, ditto.
The air conditioner.
Yeah, and it's not.
Yeah, is, is.
Any further or any closer than what the air conditioner is already?
Actually a little less.
Yeah.
But I think also, I think to be, putting, the, the sighting of the generator anywhere else around the house would be. Of course. It would be very difficult in terms of disrupting, or having put a new. Power and gas lines.
And that area back there is a little bit challenged anyway.
Property.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a little challenged.
They put the house too close to the line anyway.
I know.
That'd be enough, you know?
Keeping with the neighbor.
Okay.
The neighbor had a generator too, he said. No, not close to the line.
Okay.
Good. Alright, guys, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so.
What, what happened to this middle one? I don't know.
Are we gonna have to put that next month?
Is he there?
Daniel's four one, where are we doing?
He's not here.
So that's just a no show.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we need to have them present us some stuff on.
Oh yeah, no, I, I, I agree, I, I didn't. Honestly, since I've been here, this is the first, first, first time I've seen somebody just no show.
No, we had.
Usually, you know about it ahead of time, yeah.
Well, we had that recently with that shed on Mount.
Brandon Striker.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Well, we had the three thirty-two.
He no showed twice.
Three thirty-two.
Three thirty-two, yeah, it has happened, but. I will put it off a month, uh, let him know that probably it'll be done throughout next month, he may have to wait for a while.
The order that should have been made will be made.
That's gonna be an interesting.
Too, it's interesting.
Two doors away, there is a very high garage, that's not attached to the house.
Yeah, I'm happy to.
Yeah, but that's the one that the guy needed an RV in, right? Like ten years ago.
No, it's not, it's. That was built in like the early sixties.
Oh, not the ones.
And, and that was habitable space, but I don't believe it is anymore, because I think they, they didn't drain the water in there and. And they had safety.
Oh, really?
It's not, and that is a fully habitable.
Now it's wetlands?
Just protect it. I can't even tear it down.
Alright, uh, no requests for rehearing? Okay, we have a referral from the town boards. Town board is considering a local law that would remove chapter two twenty. Dash nine point one, short-term rentals, and replace it with a new town code, chapter two oh one, short-term rental. The town board has set a public hearing for April twenty-second, and is seeking comments and feedback on the draft law. Think you all got a copy of that?
I didn't, I skimmed it, I didn't get the gist of it.
So what this does is it takes something that is technically right now in the zoning code, which makes it subject to your purview. Makes it a separate chapter in town code, just a license, just like a door-to-door salesman license, or a.
Ah, okay.
Uh, dog licenses.
It's maintenance fee.
Completely out from under you guys, which is.
Yeah, right, no kidding. So what, so, so how does it, so the actual. Owners will have to pay or register as a businessman, or whatever, is that what?
Well, so.
How is, how is?
Short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Are currently, and I don't, personally, I don't think in much longer, considered. A single-family residential use.
Right.
If I own a single-family house and I rent it to you for two years, that's single-family use.
I have an Airbnb next to it.
Yeah, if you rent it every week, it's still the same use.
Right.
I don't think that's gonna last much longer, but right now it is, but. Airbnbs are really similar to hotels, they're not hotels, they're really similar, you got fifteen people coming from all over the country. They don't know the area, they don't know the neighbors.
I have a private road we maintain.
Exactly, and they don't know where to park, they don't know where the fire extinguishers are, so this sort of. Gives the town the ability to regulate them a little bit, because they're. Bringing people into the town and saying, and the town kinda has a responsibility, not legal, by you, but. A, a more of a moral responsibility to make sure these things aren't gonna burn down and that they're. And then there's the act, the neighbors are gonna go crazy if you have giant parties. Um, there is a short-term rental law on books right now, that does the same thing. We're just sort of reframing it.
I can give you a little background, when I was on ordinance, we brought in somebody who, um. They, they are a clearinghouse, and they keep track of everything and provide there's a revenue kickback. Uh, for the town, uh, you pay them a fee.
Right.
But the, the thing of it is that. There, the question was, if you're aware of the Airbnb and something goes wrong, there's a, a, you know, somebody dies or something. Are we on the hook? We weren't sure about that. The other one is the fire people were very concerned, just as you said, Chris. Uh, noise and parking and a lot of cars, it's really raised, uh, raised havoc.
Well, and ours being a private road, and we have, you know, like, it's very narrow parking, that's what we've had.
Well, exactly, and it drives the neighbors crazy, because if you live there year-round.
Turn it around in my driveway.
To your neighbors, you say, hey, Mike, I can't back out with you there, even if you hate each other.
Yeah.
You say, can, can you just pull your car up through, you, you don't know these people who are there for a week, and then another group is there for a week.
Yeah, and I think, just in going through it, I think they've addressed these issues quite well.
Yeah, we worked, uh, I mean, the.
My neighbor's been fine, I can't say that he hasn't.
For the most part, there's no problem, these.
Yeah.
These are people who can afford ten thousand dollars a week to rent a house.
Right.
They're not trash, for the most part, but sometimes you get a frat party, sometimes you get a natural party, and it's gonna drive you crazy.
But obviously, they're not gonna have the commitment to the community that we do, being, being, uh, year-round, uh, people. So you always have a little bit of, uh, concern, and that's, that's the lake also, uh, with behavior. But it's, it's a problem all around the country.
Yep.
And, uh, uh, there's probably revenue to be made, but there's also, uh, sometimes, uh. Obligations or responsibility, whether you take on or not, and some of the legal cases really, I think that's still, it's still. Uh, the Wild West in terms of where it's going.
Some states have said it's a business and should be regulated as such, some states have said it's single-family residential use, and.
It is a business.
How dare you, just because they're making money on it, doesn't change the use.
Right.
Uh, New York is sort of, one court said, oh, it seems like a hotel to me.
Right.
But they didn't say this is a hotel use, it's, it seems, it seems not a lot like a hotel. So the town currently charges nine hundred dollars for a three-year permit. You have to renew every three years, that's, that's three hundred dollars a year. And I'm being, I'm generalizing, but these things rent for about ten thousand dollars, so it's not price gouging. Uh, it covers the town's cost in administering them, I, I spoke with the town planner and the code enforcement officer. Mike, do you remember how many hours it takes you guys to process one of these applications?
Like, what we're doing right then?
A short-term rental application.
Oh, Chris does all that, I, I honestly don't know how long it takes.
But it's, it's, I forget, but it's, the town's not making money on these.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that, the town staff said, actually, once we're renewing them. Um, they didn't want, originally, two years ago, they didn't want to be renewing every permit every year, it was just too much. Now with the cut permit software and the support system software, uh. Development office, and actually, we could do them every year and charge people a lower fee.
Most of I am, like, right now, is, uh, uh, in terms of how many, quite a few, right?
There are, yes, like sixty, say, that have permits, I think. Could be wrong about that.
Really?
Um, and we had the, the company that the town retained, started to search for other ones. Didn't do a great job, just got terminated, and we hired a new service.
Yeah, 'cause there's more than.
Yeah. And it's, I, yeah, I think it was sixty that got the permit, or sixty.
Yeah.
Does, does the town give any, and those rental, the sales tax out of that, or?
Nope, nope.
No, just the property tax and then.
I don't know.
Correct, I believe that Ontario County also does not include the short-term rentals in its hotel and occupancy tax.
Ah.
I know for a fact, 'cause I did, I dealt with the case out there, that Stuben County, last year, I think the county legislature said, alright. Just, they changed their law that says all hotels and beds and breakfasts have to pay an occupancy tax of eighty percent, forty percent. Um, they said, and this includes short-term rentals, and VRBO and Airbnb said, okay, thanks for letting us know. You know, can you please give us your bank accounts, direct deposit information, and they charge it right with, when you're paying your fee? It just goes, and VRBO takes care of it for, so, so it's not going to the property owner who says, at the end of the year, oh, no, I got a nail. They do it, sometimes VRBO and Airbnb set up separate agreements with the county. Look, we've got this many, we can't give you eight percent of all of them.
Right.
But, well, let's streamline and give you this much. Uh, these are, uh, VRBO is owned by Speed.
Oh, good.
Uh, which is owned by, you know, United Travel Group, which is world travel. Telecom.
Yeah.
Uh, but, these are huge companies that have a lot on the line to do these things right. They're not gonna mess with.
Right.
So our current law says you can have a maximum number of guests of two per bedroom. Uh, which isn't, which I believe is about to be changed, it didn't work, some people have a room this size.
Right.
And you can have two people in it, um, but VRBO, Airbnb, and Finger Lakes, well, the, the local one.
Oh.
Said, no, 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 you can't advertise occupancy more than a municipality is gonna let you. Stop doing, we, like, I think, I know the local one just absolutely rejects them, I think VRBO actually promises that. Don't, we checked your town, town's code, you can't do that. And I think they require you to upload your. Uh, and I think they require you to upload your license or card that it was required.
That's interesting.
So we're being asked for our.
If you have any comments about.
I was gonna say, I, I, some of the other committees have had some very eloquent, uh, comments, uh. I'm not that eloquent, so.
But if, you know, when the code about accessory structures and garages and habitable space comes up.
Oh, yeah.
You know, I'm assuming your, your comment would be the ZBA strongly endorses this, then could you please?
Yeah.
Have this passed as soon as possible, this. In my opinion, it's taking it. Out of your jurisdiction, but you've never exercised that jurisdiction, nobody ever appealed. So it doesn't really have an impact on the ZBA, you don't have to do anything.
So we can, just no comment?
Yeah.
I mean, say.
I would be certainly supportive of.
Yeah, or if you have a suggestion.
We could, we could just say, take out whatever we have to deal with. Just take our work up and then do it.
You can say to me, if reviews the new law and has no objections.
Yeah, you could say that.
Yeah, there you go.
Generally supports.
Okay. Don't see any issue.
I like that, actually, Chip, I like that you're gonna say something.
Yeah.
I mean, you, you guys are the, the frontline of, of problems, of seeing what the problems in the town code. So you should have input, this one, if you don't actually have any specific insight, but usually you will, and you should say stuff.
I mean, I certainly agree with what they were, there were some suggestions some of the other chairman made or committees made. For more clarification before it's.
Yeah, I did see that.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 I know what you're gonna go with.
Some of it's on maximum number of people and.
Yeah.
Whether, whether. Goes along with the town plan.
Perfect. Mike, you'll.
Voting that I made, did somebody second?
I, I second.
Make sure your discretion. Hold on, favor? Okay. Oh, no, we need the approval of the, uh. Minutes of March nineteen.
There was also this email that went around from.
Yeah, she didn't have them done, didn't she?
Uh, well, there was an email that went around from Jared, basically asking for a combined board meeting on May thirteenth. And we, each board was supposed to respond.
Yeah.
And I haven't heard us talk about that.
I, I haven't.
I don't have a problem with that, anybody.
What day of the week is that?
May thirteen. It was a Tuesday. No, it's a Monday, it's the day after Mother's Day.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, that makes a lot of sense. Was it a five P M.?
I didn't see a time.
Would be more convenient to do it on a dump day.
It's like my outing.
Wednesdays are.
Pretty sad.
But he did ask for every board to respond, I don't know if he responded already.
No, I didn't actually, I've forgotten.
I didn't see a time. In the email, just.
My guess is it's five P M.
Yeah, yeah, it's an email.
I'll have to.
Uh, I saw it and figured, but it's, I'd say it's five P M. Um, because the town board starts at six P M.
I will certainly attend it.
Mike, can you just? Talk to Sarah about row response, saying the zoning board strongly supports a joint board meeting and as many of them as will. As possible will attend.
Convenient.
Don't knock it.
Alright, alright, so, um, the minutes for March nineteen.
I'm with Kelly, I don't see this on, I thought she said.
No, they're always done, I always get them done.
Oh, okay, I thought, I thought I read something that's.
No, some of that was from Kim.
Was it from Kim?
Everybody knew what I've got done.
Oh, okay. I wasn't here, so. Usually I try to reply with an email, that way I remember I looked at.
It's okay, I mean, you can still approve, you're not requ, there's no law that says that any board has to approve minutes. If you've appointed a secretary to take minutes and that's what minutes are. Unless there's.
It was something, I think I'm.
I saw some correspondence about the ZBA meeting.
There, I didn't, I didn't really look, so. I saw the Kim stuff, but I didn't see the.
Oh, you know what, I was in, I know.
No matter.
Alright. Chip moves, David, you willing to second it?
I'll second it.
Oops.
Anybody have any new business to have?
No.
Anybody like to make any other?
Yeah, I gotta, so, just a small thing, I can wait until. So, um, on the, you know, visitation yesterday going about the, the, um. I went to the German house, but they don't have a number on the outside, but I used my, you know, gizmo on my car. But they didn't have the signpost, and I said, you know, I'm not wondering, you know. Thinking I wanna go on the property if they're not doing this, you know, we've had.
They didn't have the signpost?
People should, no, there was no sign, and I don't, they don't even have a number on the front, because believe me, I went by several times, so. That was a little, right by Sneerkoi Road.
Oh, no, I know, I mean, I guess I didn't even look for our sign, cause I knew the house.
Yeah, I see, and I'm not, for me, uh, going, so I, I went, I'm not going there. So, but I looked around from, from the road, and I, I parked, but then when I went to the, uh, the other place there. And I see the two, uh, buildings, I'm going, you know, what the hey, because both buildings are for sale. They were totally unoccupied, so there was nobody to, uh, to talk with. And, uh, I'm wondering, you know, who's on first when it comes to that kind of stuff too, because. Uh, you could call it anything you wanted, it had a, it had a patio, it had, uh, a parcel, you know, rooms. And a, and one large room, and I don't know what you would use it for, but to me, it looks like a rental or something. I don't know, but, so, like, did I trip over something, do I, am I supposed to report that?
Oh, yeah, if you know something like that, absolutely, just then, Kristen and I will look into it, see if. Got, um, if they actually got a permit, we can find them that way a lot.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. You're the, you know, you're the eyes on the ground, you know what, you've approved and not approved and.
Yeah.
Usually there's a picture.
That property hadn't come up before us in my tenure.
Yeah. And the structure in the back looked pretty new, unless it's, you know, but again.
Oh, there you go, Mike.
So what do I know?
Right?
There's no picture on the cloud permit.
No, there isn't, no.
Really? So it was with the buildings?
Yeah, I, I didn't know what was going on, which, because it was very small, but, but.
Wrote a note there, someone needs the picture.
Yeah, so I, I'm wondering what's going on, the owner, uh, or, you know, didn't come, he, that, the, uh. Uh, the generator guy is not gonna know for anything, or he doesn't want to. And, uh, I'm just wondering, uh, you know, what that was, uh.
I mean, I, I walk by there all the time, I would assume that was a separate property.
Yeah, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going back to the German brothers thing, I, I mean, I read the email from Kim, you know, as far as ECB. It's one of the first times I've ever totally agreed with everything ECB had to say. But, but the reality is, um, the way this has been interpreted.
Right.
I, I don't see, even they could be unhappy about this. Cause I agree with everything she said.
Yeah.
But I know that's been a problem in the past, they don't think we listen to anything they say, so it's.
Well, that, right, you're right, a lot of times we look at it, take it under advisement, so to speak.
They spend more time than anybody, you know, they've got a lot of expertise.
ECB minutes or recommendations regarding the, uh, new law. They sort of mentioned the fact that there have been approvals of things like pools.
Right. That we've rented.
Places that are rented, but.
Yeah.
When we get a thing, we don't know whether they're rentals or not.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody. Will, will do that?
No, but I will.
Please.
Yes.
Second?
I.
Just, with, with, last thing, Chris, what you're saying, this.